So I'd like to invite Tara Nygaard as a representative of the Brookfield.
And for our nurses. Whereas through their skill and expertise, our nation's school nurses help to foster a healthy nurturing community in which our children can learn and grow. And whereas most often, school nurses are the first and sometimes the only line of defense against illnesses and conditions our students face, making their contribution to the education and welfare of the student population invaluable. And whereas the nature of the profession calls on their ability to take roles beyond that of a health provider, acting as a teacher, a confidant, mentor, and friend to the students of Connecticut. Whereas today's society presents students with an overwhelming number of physical, social, and mental ills, and school nurses have become an essential component of the effective health programs both in and out of the classroom. Whereas the overwhelming dedication school nurses show to their profession and to the children they care for stands as a testament to their commitment to the success of Connecticut's future generations. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Brookfield Board of Education supports and endorses May 10th, 2023 as school.
Here, it is important to acknowledge and remind everybody, we did acknowledge her a couple of months ago, Beth is retiring after over 20 years with the school district and serving our students. Thank you, Beth. Thank you for everything.
Okay, and the third item under our recognition is the, our annual HRRA, Housatonic Resource Recovery Authority Annual Poster Contest. So Dr. Brill, I don't know if you want to make any opening remarks?
Sure, can you hear me on the mic? It didn't work before. Okay, thank you. Yes, so I really, as we just saw, Mr. Beldon, and thank you for the proclamations, it is an evening of celebrations, as will the June meeting be as well. There's just so much to celebrate and spotlight and highlight frankly, of all the incredible work that goes on day in and day out in our school district, whether it's with our families and our students who are here tonight, our faculty, our staff, or administration, it's just incredible, and I couldn't be more proud. And I'm just so excited. We annually do the HRRA poster contest, we have lots of participation, I think our turnout this year is in the 170 to 180 range, near record high for us. And Lisa Gramling, the Board of Education Superintendent-Secretary, leads this project for us annually, and it is an annual award-winning project. And so I'd like to have Lisa come up and talk a little bit about the project itself, and then introduce the students and our different winners that we have tonight that are here with us. And parents, when it's time for students to come up, please feel free to come up, take pictures, enjoy, and know that this is also on video, so this will all be captured for you as well. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome, and, am I on?
Yes.
Welcome to the 16th Annual Housatonic Resources Recovery Authority Poster Contest Award Ceremony, or as we call it, the HRRA. We are so happy that all of you could join us this evening, this is really such a fun project to be a part of, and I am glad to take the lead on that. I am Lisa Gramling, I am the Secretary to Dr. Brill, and also the Coordinator for the HRRA for Brookfield. A little background on this contest, we typically start it off in January, where the HRRA gives us the templates to distribute to the students, and in the middle to end of February, those submissions need to be sent to the local coordinators at each building. The most important thing about this contest is the theme that the HRRA gives us, so does anybody remember what that theme was? Anybody remember? Recycle outside the box? Remember? Because that's why you guys are here, and you did a great job. So, anyway, so the buildings judge the posters, first, second, and third place, and then those entries come to central office, where we take all of the first place by grade and send it off to be judged regionally. And that happens typically in the middle of March. And after that, the HRRA has their big judging, and then they have their big celebration, which is typically the last weekend, the last week of April, so I'm sure the regional winners that we have here this evening were there. So again, recycle outside the bin, it was a very important theme to the HRRA this year. Just some facts that we had, 173 participants this year and five regional winners, so you guys did an outstanding job. Yes, absolutely. And so that's really basically the nuts and bolts of the whole contest. Those of you that won regionally, I believe last week, you probably got your artwork back. So you'll get a ribbon tonight, but I believe you should have your artwork, if you don't, please let me know. A huge thank you to the HRRA and the principals, and the secretaries, teachers, and all of the coordinators in the building, because we just could not do this without you. So, we are going to start this now with our littlest artists, and Mrs. Farias, if you could come and help me, please. So we're going to start right here. So our first artist is kindergarten first place and also second place regional winner, Bryn Clarkson. Kindergarten second place is Isabella Yun. Isabella here? No? Okay. Kindergarten third place, oh, Isabella's here? Yay! Kindergarten third place, Ila Whitmore? Not here? Okay. First grade first place and regional honorable mention is Rico Flores. Is Rico here with us? First grade second place is Luca Hanlack? Luca here? No? All right, one more for center school. First grade third place, Bridget Field? Is Bridget here? Yes, thank you. All right, Mrs. Farias, thank you so much. Dr. P., would you like to come up and help me? Our second grade first place and first place regional winner is Christian Metz. Second grade, oop, second grade second place is Avery De Souza? Avery with us? Second grade third place is Tyler Freeman? Tyler? Okay. Third grade first place is Natalie Zieglemeyer? Third grade second place is Kaylee Clarkson? Third grade third place Evelyn Shatino? Fourth grade first place Drew Fries? Fourth grade second place Natalie Freeman? And fourth grade third place Jason Yun? Okay, Mr. Renda? You're up. On to Whiskaneer. Our fifth grade first place is Amber Yang? Fifth grade, oops, sorry. Fifth grade second place is Brianna Lynn? Fifth grade third place is Nikhil Manoir? Sixth grade first place is Brian Rowe? Sixth grade second place is Caitlin Lynch? And sixth grade third place is Bryce Correa? I think that does it for Whiskaneer, I do not think we had any seventh or eighth grade entries. So, Mr. Belanda, on to ninth grade, we'll start with the ribbon right up top. Ninth grade first place and first place regional winner Alexandra Contras? Ninth grade second place is Catherine Henderson? Ninth grade third place is Rebecca Baderton? And finally, this was our grand prize regional winner last year, this is 10th grade first place and first place regional winner Alvina Bilal. I think that's it, so congratulations to all our winners, to everybody that submitted an entry, thank you so much, and hope we see you next year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all for coming.
Thanks for coming, everybody, congratulations. Thank you, Mrs. Gramling.
So Board, I had a request from our student representative, because she has a conflicting meeting this evening, if we could move her up to next on the agenda, would you all be okay with that? Could I have a motion to move item seven to the next item on the agenda?
Moved.
The second? Okay, moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Caitlin, so much. All right, hi everyone, it's been a while since my last report, so I do have a lot of updates today. Starting off, the BHS PTO had its monthly meeting on April 20th. They discussed several topics, including the recognition of teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week, providing options for student athletes to eat after school, possible fundraisers, a review of the district's strategic plan, and how to increase parent involvement in the organization. The next meeting will be held on May 18th at 6:30 in the BHS library. A group of ninth grade earth science students visited the American Museum of National History in New York City on April 25th, and students visited the American, or, no, students were lucky to experience a show in the Hayden Planetarium. Our college and career counselor, Mrs. Usher, worked with New Mufford High School to chaperone a field trip to Penske Automotive Group in Fairfield on April 25th. Students were able to learn about careers in the automotive industry and got to see some unbelievably high-end Porsches. Peer counseling held its annual head shaving event on April 27th to raise money for childhood cancer research. Chick-fil-A came to support the event, participants had a great time, left with a lot less hair, and felt good about supporting a great cause. Senior prom is next Friday, May 12th, at the Kenwood Inn with a red carpet theme, we are very excited about that. Several state and local award ceremonies are coming up, the CIAC Unified Sports had their award ceremony on May 1st, the SWC Leadership Awards are May 4th, the CIAC Scholar-Athlete Awards are May 7th, and the Western Connecticut Superintendent's Association Awards are on May 15th. The BHS Celebration of Excellence will take place on Monday, June 5th at 6:00 PM in the BHS auditorium. The BHS School Climate Committee is sponsoring a Clean Day on Saturday, May 20th from 9:00 to 1:00. Student volunteers will be supervised by BHS staff, and will help to spruce up spaces and just create a cleaner school environment. The BHS Music Department Concert will be held on the evening of May 23rd in the auditorium. And then the National Honor Society is holding a 5K race on Mother's Day to raise money for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Foundation. Registration is open now. Also, for the National Honor Society, we will be inducting new members, and that will be held on May 25th in the evening in the BHS auditorium. The BHS Grad Walk takes place on June 13th with graduates visiting all schools in their caps and gowns. The BHS graduation and festivities will take place on Saturday, June 17th with a car parade for the 2023 to 2024, oh no, I'm sorry, for the 2023 graduates. This ceremony is starting at 11:15 in the morning. Scheduling for the 2023 to 2024 school year is well underway, the administration has determined how many sections of each course that will run next year, and the next step is building the skeleton for the schedule. AP testing began this past Monday, May 1st, and continues through May 12th next week. Mr. Tong is holding a study session for the AP Statistics Exam right now, which I will be attending after this report, so thank you, Mr. Beldon, for moving me up. Finally, May 1st was Bobcat Destination Day, so graduating seniors wore clothes to showcase their pursuits for after high school. I proudly wore my University of North Carolina Wilmington sweater around school. Thank you all for listening today.
So are there any questions for Caitlin? Before we let her go to her study group? All right, thank you, Caitlin.
Congratulations, Caitlin.
Thank you so much.
So Board, I'd like to change up another item on the agenda, we do have families here who are involved with the Student Spotlight, which is talking about the recent French Exchange Program. I'd like to move that to next, and then I'd also like to just, we only have three people signed up for public speaking, I'd like to let them all speak at the beginning, right, so that they don't have to sit through our rather long agenda tonight, if that's okay with all of you, as an exception. Is that okay?
Yep.
So I'd take a motion to move item six to the next item on the agenda?
Second.
Then do I have a second?
I think Amy seconded at the same time.
And Amy seconded, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to do the Student Spotlight on the French Exchange students.
Thank you, Mr. Belanda, I really appreciate you doing that. What did I just say? I got Mr. Belanda on the brain.
I mean, I have more hair than he does now.
Sorry, Mr. Beldon, sorry, Mr. Belanda. So, Mr. Beldon, thank you for doing that. I publicly, as we get ready to begin, I want to thank Mr. Renda, Ms. Abrego, our world language, and LL Coordinator, and certainly Mr. Johnson, our world language teacher, who came to us in the very beginning of the school year with this idea, and we're just thrilled that we were able to plan for it, and safely, properly, and enrichment-wise, plan for a really incredible experience for all involved. So, Mr. Renda or Catherine, would you like to come up and get started? The floor is yours.
I'll bring Mr. Johnson with me.
Thank you.
Is it on? No? Yes, perfect. Okay. So this is just a quick presentation to just sum up what the exchange looked like. As John said, I think it was my first day, I had to kind of start a little bit later in the year, as I finished up in a previous district, and Mr. Renda took me around Whiskaneer, and when I met Mr. Johnson, that very first thing was, I really want to do a French Exchange, can we please do that? And I was like, absolutely. And really, you know, I stand up here with you as well as Mr. Renda, kind of telling everything that we did, and that's great, but it wouldn't have happened at all if it wasn't for Mr. Johnson and all the work that he did, so I just want to commend him for that. Do you want to tell us a little bit about the school that joined us? You can come over here so they can hear you on the mic.
So, thank you, thank you for allowing me to speak here about this. So this, this school, this particular teacher's name's Yves Guast, he's a teacher in a school in Central Bay, southern part of France. We started our communications about three years ago, and we shared projects, there was a platform where we could share projects, the students, they could give feedback to each other, and it was just a great way to have that interaction. And then two years ago, he, he then approached me, or a year and a half ago, and he said, you know, why don't we turn this into, why don't we take it up a notch? And I go, well, what do you mean? And he said, well, why don't we try to have an exchange program? And I said, well, I was a little hesitant, I didn't know how it would be, you know, how it would be received here in this district, and I had never done anything to that, that level. And so, but I did know that he had already done this to seven other schools throughout the United States, so he was, you know, a veteran, he knew what he was doing, and I said, all right, well, let's make it happen. So there's a lot of communication back and forth. This school here, there are two schools, it's a private school, grade eight, the students that came over here, there were 48 of them, and it was rigorous for them to come over, they had to write essays, they had, there was this, a lot of criteria for them to fulfill, and they got, it was based on a point system, and finally, they had to be able to, they were chosen. And I didn't know how big, I had talked to Mr. Renda, I said, well, how many can we receive, you know, logistically? And, well, let's go for, let's try 30. And so we tried that, and it turned out, Yves, their school, they had a number of students, a long waiting list, because they really wanted to take part in this experience. And then that all depended on how many families here in Brookfield, in the Whiskaneer, that were willing to receive them and to take them on for an entire week. Well, sure enough, we got all the way up to 48, and that was the max that that school would allow to go, because that would give them five chaperones. And I think that was the maximum, that I think, Dean, you were pretty much willing anything beyond that, and I don't know, it was, it was a lot to take on. So, they, they came over, they spent a week in New York first, and then they brought it, there was a charter bus, brought them over to Whiskaneer, and they spent the entire week with their host families, and they also were able to shadow our students every day, Monday through Friday, for all their classes, they took the buses, or their parents drove them, they had their breakfasts at home, they had lunches at school, they, they did everything. The students had after-school extracurricular activities, they would, they would sit and watch, or I don't know if they were allowed to participate, I don't think so, but they were at least able to watch and do that. And then what was amazing for me was just the community, it just, it was, it was an honor, really, to just, a privilege to, to see how the community came together, especially the families. They, they just took hospitality to a whole new level. They were involved in all sorts of activities and events after-school evenings, there's this, this app called Group Me App, and that just, they were, just, once they set that up, it was hard to catch up, it was hard to, they were posting videos and pictures of everything they were doing, and my wife would say, why is this thing ringing all the time, all the time? Because there's something being posted. And it was amazing, and we had to narrow it down, where there's a, whoever did this was, I can't remember all the people that were involved in creating this video here, but there were just hundreds of pictures and all sorts of videos, and I had no idea how to narrow it down, but, yeah, it was amazing. So, the community that was involved, it's just great to see. See that this opportunity brought out the community, and then of course, there's the authentic cultural exchange experience for them, for their students, and for ours, for the families, for the extended relatives, for everybody involved in the school, so it's just, it's a privilege, and, you know, once I'm done speaking here this evening, I already have a, a meeting set up with that other teacher to start planning for next year's, that's the exchange part, where, you know, we're counting on that, but of course, I'd need to present that.
He's salting the oats, that's what he's doing right now, isn't he?
Yeah, I am, but, should we show the video now? Can I? Thank you, I was not planning on talking that long.
Yeah, it's, it's a process, so you summarized it as best you could. So this is our video that tried to recap all of the great moments, so we'll take you through that. Let's see here. I think I can go. So I'm going to have you guys start by introducing yourself and sharing your name, and how old you are, or what grade you're in.
My name's Carolyn, and I am in eighth grade.
My name is Chris Latte, Christophe in French.
My name is Barbara. It's good for them to see outside France how it works, so they can be, they can be open to all the changes, and for us teachers, it's good to come here, because we see how you work, and if there is something good, maybe we can take some ideas and, and do the same at home. So that's why it's, it's good exchange, for the kids and for us.
10 minutes before the school is beginning, you know, the fact you listen to someone speaking and say, oh, today we're going to do that, so I like it, and maybe I'm, I'm going to try to do this.
We have a lot of rules, the ambiance, can we say ambiance? It's really, it's strict, and when our kids are here, they're like, wow, they're free, you know, they can move around.
Taylor Swift.
Really? Another friend.
Who else is popular here? There's like Bad Bunny.
Oh, no.
We don't ever do this. This is like a.
You don't really get to interact with like, French-speaking people that often, like native French speakers, so it's a good experience to try to like, broaden our understanding of the French language and culture.
Oh, yes, I have some big Taylor Swift fans amongst my tour guides right now. I really want my students to see that they are French speakers, that they can use the French that they have and that they learn in the classroom, and, and use it to be understood by an actual French speaker.
My name is Frank, I am the master, family very good.
The panelists are really kind, and the school is really cool, so different from France.
They realize, the kids realize, we are different, that we are, but we are, we are the same, we are different, but the same, I don't know how to say that.
So we've got just a little bit, we have a few students who have taken some time out of their evening to, you know, like, how better to hear about it than firsthand from students, so you guys can come on up. And I think that we've prepared a few things already, so it's not too off the cuff, but we just, we want to know, how was it? And anything you can tell us about cultural similarities, differences, a little bit of what we saw in the video, and your most memorable moment, so however you guys want to start that, whoever wants to start, or I can pick one of you, and we'll go for it. You got it, let's go, get up here. Yeah, you're taking charge over here.
Hi, I'm Maroon, and I'm in eighth grade, so how was it for me? I had a great time with them, we went to a lot of activities.
However, if I had to say something, it was hard because of the language barrier.
It was a lot of Google Translate. In the short week that I got to spend with them, they became some of my closest friends, and I'm so grateful that I got, I got the students that I did, because we truly bonded and became a family. So, some of the differences and similarities that I noticed, which was similar to Maroon, we had like the same fashion trends, music tastes, like, we played the same sports, and language is definitely a challenge, we also used a lot of Google Translate. Their dress code was a lot stricter than ours, and the school, the school buses, they didn't have the big yellow school buses like we do. And one of my most memorable experiences was my students, Ann and Lucy, came to watch my skating competition the Friday before they got to leave, and it was just so nice to see how like, excited and happy they were to go and support me, and we just had a great time. And then, the next day was like, when we had to say goodbye, sorry, when we had to say goodbye, it made me realize how much I really bonded with them and how much I was gonna miss them.
Hi, I'm Anna, and I'm in eighth grade. My experience hosting the French, like, students, it was really wonderful, actually. One of my French students was fluent in English, so like, the, oh, sorry, the like, language barrier wasn't really like a problem, but it was like, super fun, and I got to bond with my students, and we like, became really, really good friends. And some cultural similarities and differences are like, the size of their school is like, way smaller, because they're a private school, but like, overall, there isn't really much like, difference, like, again, going off of Maroon and Izzy said, their music tastes are the same, and then the, like, fashion trends are the same, but my most memorable moment was the campfire that took place the day after the French students arrived. Everyone got to like, meet each other, and it was just super fun being able to like, see everyone for the first time, and I just really enjoyed it.
All right, so I think, again, a big thank you to all of you for being open, you know, opening up your homes, opening up yourselves to the different experience, and would you do it again?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, guys, for joining us. And just a quick wrap-up, no, it's like a big mercy to everybody, Board of Ed members, Dr. Brill, Dr. Mann, I mean, Renda, of course, right, Keith, which we already said, but again, the host families, huge, wouldn't have happened, they wouldn't have had a home to stay in without that support, the students, TPO had a.
Part, teachers had a part, secretaries had a huge part, everybody, right, from, I can't even name them all, but just a huge thanks to everybody there. And I think one other thing I'd like to share from the flip side of things, I had a bunch of pictures in here in case the video don't work. But, they're there if you want to go through them, but there was a letter that a French student wrote to their family when they were leaving, so I'll just read that quickly to you. She said, "Hello, Jewett family, I'm just writing you a little letter to thank you for welcoming us this week, it was one of the best weeks of our lives. We are so happy to have fallen into such an incredible family, and we are so happy to have met you, Mia, Chloe, CJ, Mark, and Gisette. Thank you again for the activities and the time spent together, thank you for everything. Thank you, Mark, for the superb breakfast, thank you, Chloe, for your superb humor, the funniest, thank you, Mia, for helping me in middle school, thank you, Gisette, for your sunshine, and thank you, CJ, CG, for your kindness. I leave you on this, on this letter, I will miss you all when I return to France, hope to see you soon, bye." And I think, again, that we've been talking a lot about the world-class of Brookfield, and I think this is just a beautiful way to celebrate that, is we're really making it a world-class experience and bringing other students here from other parts of the world, and then hopefully, we can, you know, they're excited to reciprocate for next year, so, thanks, everyone, for your time, and thanks again.
No, no, I just want to make it, if everyone just give a nice round of applause to Keith for the amount of time and effort he put in, I mean, countless hours after school, and times, you know, he'd say, "Can I meet with you?", I'm like, "I think you can handle, you got this." And, but we did meet a couple of times, but seriously, he was there many late nights trying to put this together, and the help, obviously, of Catherine also, and also the staff and the families that were on board. It was a little tough, we were bringing chairs to classes to make sure we had enough spots for the kids to sit, and things like that, all the logistical things, that does take a lot of time, but it wouldn't have been done if it wasn't for Keith, so, thank you so much, Keith, for making this happen. And I am the administrator on that trip to France. The board members were already lobbying for chaperone duty.
Yeah, I want to lob, I want to chaperone to Saint-Tropez.
There you go.
Thank you all for coming tonight, this was very exciting to hear about. We've been hearing the buildup on this for most of the year, and so it was great to see how it came together, so, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so we're gonna move on with the agenda. Next up is public comment. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, we're gonna do all of public comment at the beginning of the meeting this evening. I just think it's fair with only three people here, and just for those of you who are gonna speak, we have a, we have an agenda tonight, you would have been here till eleven o'clock waiting, so, so, so the, so I'll do it in the order, and Mr. Korea, where's Mr. Korea? I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you go first, but you sign up for two slots, one at the beginning and one at the end, I'll give you two slots here in this front-up session, too, unless you want to do it in your first segment.
I can do it.
Okay, whatever you need, okay?
Andy Korea, forty-five West Whiskaneer Road, is this on? You can hear, okay. Yeah, so, I just wanted to come and talk about something that's on the press, and remind the Board that the BOE Code of Ethics requires board members and superintendents to respect all national, state, and local laws and regulations pertaining to education and public agencies. There was an agreement that was listed in an article recently, over the weekend, that was put forth by the administration and apparently drafted by council and reviewed and not vacated by the BOE, that violates the Individual with Disabilities Act and potentially Connecticut fraud statutes. The way the agreement is written is codifying a predetermination of an individualized education plan decision and placement prior to a proper legal IDA-compliant planning and placement team meeting, and that's, you know, knowingly illegal for some of the roles of folks involved, and there's recent examples of other knowingly illegal behavior. And as a contract, it's requiring silence as a legal consideration to provide what, by law, would be right, by a right, per IDA. So, the silence requirement the district is aggressively pursuing by forcing an outplacement while threatening a lawsuit provides a private benefit to individual administrators and Board of Education members to avoid the shame of facing relevant feedback on their performance and their roles and how it impacts the safety of children. That silence protects careers and reputations, but the concealment of such concerns, concerns that would be up for the public good, is dangerous to children. In late twenty-twenty-two, federal law was passed to rectify a similar risk to adults by banning the enforcement of nondisclosure agreements regarding sexual harassment in the workplace. The nondisclosure attempt is here is similar to threats that primarily women face in the workplace, but is aimed at elementary disabled children. Additionally, the contract stipulates that the parent choose an outplacement service provider that makes the district eligible for excess cost reimbursement for the state of Connecticut. So, in this agreement, Brookfield is intentionally overpaying for the education of a child, that excess cost is discretionary spending, it's no different than if we bought a coach, a truck, for winning a championship. Submitting for excess costs intentionally here would be fraud. While employees and Board of Ed members have qualified immunity, that immunity is at risk with reckless and wanton behavior, such as knowingly going through extraordinary lengths to enforce this. More than one person working to codify the intention of doing so is, say, like, in an outplacement agreement is conspiracy to commit fraud. My advice is for the Board, Brookfield Board of Education, to immediately rescind the threats of any lawsuits, cancel the agreement, and exercise its rights under the BOE bylaw nine fifteen attorneys, determine the services of the attorneys that were involved in this, both the general, board general, council, and special attorney, and disqualify their firms, their firms, for quality of service, and work with the family in good faith regarding appropriate services. Of course, it's relevant to incorporate the utter poor performance of the administration into the portfolio of failures that have far exceeded the need for termination for cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Jeremy Farrell. Jeremy, I need name and address as you start.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Farrell, thirteen South Lake Shore Drive. Okay, I'm gonna keep this quick, a bunch of the people that I wrote this, that I wrote this with in mind do not seem to be here. Last month, there was a lot more people at this Board of Ed meeting with a lot of concerns regarding the content of LGBT books within our library, and it seems that already that moment has partially passed. They were angry, they came here, they shared, and they're gone. Personally, I don't get to move on, and neither do other members in my community. As somebody who is LGBT, as somebody who walked these halls, and as somebody who walked these halls not knowing they were LGBT, this stuff lasts, and it has real lasting effects. We don't always get to move on. What don't we get to move on from? Well, last month, we heard a lot of, "This is not an attack on LGBT people," that is ridiculous to even portray it as one. But what I would like to say now, for anybody who's listening, for anybody who thinks that way, high school students are smarter than that, they're better than that, and we need to give them credit. They are going to notice that the seven most challenged books in the country are LGBT. They are going to notice that the only books brought up last month were LGBT, and they are going to notice that the book people are angriest about has gay in the title. From their perspective, I don't see how this could feel like anything except an attack on LGBT people, and they are going to have to wake up every day knowing that this attack could return at any point whenever anybody else wants it to. I beg everybody listening to this to be aware of what we are actually doing here, of the fact that our actions have real consequences. I recognize you may disagree with me, and I completely understand, but please think about what I am saying here. Care enough to consider what I have to say and how this could affect our students. I think we have to consider the ramifications of these choices for the students who walk these hallways. Thank you.
Thank you. And our third speaker is Shannon Riley.
Shannon Riley, eleven Deer Run Road. Good afternoon, Board of Education. I was actually reading through the different pieces of, like, items in the agenda, and one of the things that struck me was, as we were changing policy, that there wasn't the move to using gender-inclusive language, and I wanted the Board to consider that, that as they're changing policy, instead of in specific, the challenging curriculum policy, where in the section under instruction, students may be found with any racial, ethnic, or socioeconomic group within all nationalities, and as it currently says, within both genders, I would encourage to change that to all genders, and to switch any use of like, the his/her to the inclusive their or themselves use of that language. Okay, that's all I have to say tonight, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for our public comment, unless Mr. Korea had a second topic. Okay, good. I did promise.